I got to watch and experience.
Mine?
I'd like to call to order, please, the regular meeting of the Celine Area Schools Board of Education at 6:32 PM. If all could please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, welcome to our first Zoom-free meeting of 2021. That feels pretty good. We have a very, very special night swearing in of our 2021 trustees, recognizing our student representative to the Board of Education, and recognizing our wonderful retirees. So thank you for joining us. If we could please prepare for the ceremonial swearing in of our new board trustees, and I would like to thank the Honorable Anna for sure. Am I pronouncing that right? Fresh hour, thank you. 14A District Court Judge for joining us. Thank you so much. We are going to go in alphabetical order with Trustee Brad Gerby up first. If we could have, Brad, do you have any of your family members with you here tonight? If they could come up and join you, I think that'd be nice. Very, very nice job. Thank you, Trustee Gerby. We have been very honored to have you at the board table with us along with Trustee Miller these last few months, and they did sign the official oath within the 10 days after our elections last year. But this ceremony unfortunately had to be put on pause because of COVID, so we're very happy to do it tonight. If we could welcome, please, Trustee Jones and her family to the podium area.
Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this state
and the Constitution of this state
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office
of the member of, excuse me, of member of the Board of Education
of member of the Board of Education
of Celine Area Schools, Washtenaw County, Michigan
of Celine Area Schools, Washtenaw County, Michigan
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Trustee Jones, for stepping up, and we're happy to have you here with us. If we could please welcome Trustee Miller to the podium area and her family, that would be great.
Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this state
and the Constitution of this state
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office
of member of the Board of Education
of member of the Board of Education
of Celine Area Schools, Washtenaw County, Michigan
of Celine Area Schools, Washtenaw County, Michigan
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Trustee Miller, and thank you also for your service in these very important months of 2021 as we start off the year. Moving along to item number four, please. Our public comment, our first opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make a personal attack against a board member, a district employee, or a student. If we have any students who would like to engage in public comment, we would welcome them now. Seeing none. Any other stakeholders who have requested to speak during public comment? Seeing none, we'll allow our trustees to get all settled back into their chairs. All right, thank you very much. I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to approve the agenda as printed. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further.
So moved.
Michael, thank you. Support.
Second by Susan, thank you. And we will all note that we don't have our roll call vote tonight because we are all live, so we might be shaving an extra five to 10 minutes off of the meeting this evening. Moving along to scheduled reports, very happy to introduce our 2020 Oh, sorry. I'm not used to seeing that roll call vote off of the thing. Moving to verbal vote, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Seeing none, motion carries, please, seven zero. Moving to scheduled reports, our 2021 retiree recognition. I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Ellis.
Thank you, President Stebbin. It is a pleasure not to have a laptop sitting right here in your face, wondering what microphones are on or not. This year, we have 24 retirees, and if you think all the way back to September, we introduced to you a number of new employees. Traditionally speaking, at the end of the year, we introduce to you those individuals who are moving on to greener pastures and doing better things with their lives, and we're fortunate to have six of those retirees with us here tonight. Each of these people has served this district with distinguished service and really cared for our children. I think you can be proud of all of them for the contributions that they've made to Celine Area Schools through the years and the variety of roles they've played. Fortunate to have with us here tonight Martha Bianchi. Martha, if you would stand up, please. Martha has been with the district from September of 14 to July of 2020. Nancy Crosby, right next to her. Nancy was with the district from 96 through 2021. To my left, Wendy Dorsett. Wendy has been with the district since 1998 and is retiring here in June. To my left, behind me here, Lynn Nichols. Lynn joined Celine Area Schools in August of 2003 and has been with us since the end of the year here. Back in the right, Pam Warman. Pam and I, we keep, we've got to fix her dates. Pam's been with the district for some time as well and retired here recently. And then last with us here tonight is Lori Wellsbecker. Lori has been with the district for 21 years, and as again, you can imagine, these are a special group of individuals. 10 years ago, when we were giving retirement awards out, we started giving a plaque to each of them. They had their years of service on it, but it also has a poem that I think speaks volumes to the work that they have done in the district, and the poem is called "The Builder." And so each of them has a plaque in the back that we'll give them tonight. But the poem goes like this. It says, "I once saw a group of men tearing a building down, a group of men in my hometown. With a heave and a ho and a mighty yell, they swung a beam and the sidewall fell. And I asked the foreman, 'Are these men skilled, the type you'd hire if you wanted to build?' He laughed and said, 'Why, no, indeed, for common labor is all I need. I can tear down in a day or two what it took the builder 10 years to do.' And I asked myself, as I walked away, 'Which of these roles am I going to play? Am I the type that constantly tears down as I make my way foolishly around, or am I the type that is trying to build with care, with the hope that the people will be glad I was there?' And I can tell you retirees, we are all very happy that you are here, and we thank you for the service that you've given Celine Area Schools. And so I do have plaques for each of you, and I'm sure somebody would like to take a picture, and there's some flowers that SASSA has for you as well. So as you continue on with your meeting, I may steal them for a minute out in the vestibule here. But thank you so much for recognizing our wonderful retirees tonight.
Thank you all for being our builders and for caring about our students. Thank you very much. Very well done and appreciated. Moving on to our second scheduled report of this evening, our recognition of superintendent, superintendent, just got a promotion. This is different not doing it on Zoom and live. Recognition of our student representative, Noah Socha. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Latch.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Noah, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate you on being awarded a $500 scholarship for serving as a student representative on the Board of Education for the 2021 school year. You've really set the standard now on what it takes to be an excellent student representative and the way you've gotten involved, not only with the students at the high school, but really students across the district. And that is really important because we talk all the time about how we need student involvement. You really backed that up and sought that out, and we're really able to showcase that. So I want to thank you for all your efforts. And I know that some of the Board of Ed trustees want to say a few words, too.
I embarrassed you at Compass Night, so I won't say too much, but I just want to say thank you. This year has been incredibly challenging for all of our students and our staff and for everyone sitting at this table, and you have really contributed to helping us have a permanent superintendent, to helping us appoint a new trustee and everything in between. And I really appreciate your professionalism and your dedication to every student in this district. Thank you.
So I was just going to say, since Noah is a senior, my daughter is a senior, I remember the Socha triplets in kindergarten, way back in kindergarten, and our paths have crossed as the years have gone with Ally in school. So it was a pleasure to see you on the board this year, and my favorite nights at the board table were when I got to sit by you. I learned so much from you in hearing your reports and just your wit and your attention to detail. And I think my father-in-law even said after the graduation on Sunday, he was like, "Are these, were the two speakers trained in public speaking?" Like, he was so impressed with your speech. So the last thing that I'll say on a more personal note is if all of that wasn't personal enough, but my own son is a freshman this year on student council, and you just have taken him, he's just been taken by you. Your mentorship to those younger kids in their freshman year has been incredible, and they want to emulate what you have done. So thank you for that. You're leaving a legacy and a mark on the high school that I know will be there for years to come. So thank you.
Hey, Noah. So ripples in the water, young man. I have had the opportunity to talk to a lot of school board members across Washtenaw, and they ask about the student representative we have, and I say, "Well, he does this," and he reports, and they say, "Oh, my gosh, ours don't do anywhere close to that." And he said, "We're, I like that. We're, we want what you've got." And I said, "Well, what we got is Noah, but you know, that's pretty good." And when we, I don't know if you were here for the, I think you were, when you asked questions of our candidates for superintendent, one of them went on at least twice saying, "I need to have what you guys have in my district. We don't even have a student representative at the board meeting, and it's so essential." He saw the best of the best. So thanks, Noah. Good job. Well done. We're so happy to have you here. Thanks.
Yeah, no, I'll obviously echo that. You have set a standard for excellence that is high, and I would expect nothing less of a future Spartan, right? And so from one Spartan to another, okay, victory for MSU, and your future is bright. And I want to thank you. You know, as a new board member, like you gave me such comfort, such, you know, hearing your voice and hearing your perspective from students and being able to do those things was important to me and helped me to go through this transition for the last few months. And so I am very appreciative of you, and I do think your future is incredibly bright. And good luck to you.
I didn't really prepare anything, but I echo what everybody's. No, I really appreciate that you reach out to multiple students, student groups, and students who survey, surveying students and bringing their voice to the table, even if it isn't in favor of what we think, or, you know, I think that's super helpful to hear everything from students and having that encouragement to have a voice at the table is really great. So yeah, I look forward to seeing what you will be doing in the future. So maybe you'll come back to graduation as an alum and speak. Thanks.
Well, same thing for me. Just you really have set the bar high. And as a fellow Spartan, I'm very proud that you are going green. I believe, are you in the James Madison or the honors program? Okay. So look forward to, just keep doing what you're doing. And just remember, people do look up to you, as you've heard over and over again, and I know you have had that within your family even. But you're a great role model. We're very proud to have you.
I'd like to say something as well. Just, yeah, even though we haven't had a chance to work together, I've just been so impressed by all that you've done and how you use your voice, and I hope you continue to do that as you move on, and just continue to use your voice and speak out for what you believe in and engage the student body in new ways as you move on to the next level. Also, I just thank you for believing in me, you know, as you spoke about candidates. I just really appreciated all that you said and hope that I can live up to that vision. Yeah, thank you.
Well done, Noah. Did you want to say a few words?
Thank you all for those incredibly kind words. It's been an honor to represent all the students and members of the community in this position. I couldn't have done it without the help of a lot of people. So thank you to all the administrators who responded to my, not last minute, but not on-time emails asking what's going on at your school. So thank you for that. Mr. Raft especially for helping me get surveys and groups to hear from other students. Thank you to my parents for supporting me along the way. They're sitting right there. I know you probably haven't met them, but that's them. And for the community for supporting me through this. And I hope to continue serving those around me and advocating on their behalf, not only in college, but hopefully in a career of public service. So thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Noah. Do you want to go ahead and introduce our new student representative?
So our new student representative for next year is Julian Downey, sitting right there. I'll read his bio real quick. Julian is in the class of 2022. He has lived in Celine his whole life and is excited to go into his senior year. He has served as class treasurer during his freshman and sophomore year, but decided to start his own club, the Celine High School Democrats. His sophomore year, he served as a student representative on the DEI committee with Mr. Graydon and was able to sit in and see how policy is made. He's excited for this new opportunity and is looking forward to seeing, learning, and participating as a student on the school board of education.
Julian, do you just want to say a few words? Welcome, and then we'll
Welcome to being put on the spot by the Board of Education.
Hi, as you all just heard, I'm Julian Downey. I'm in the class of 2022. And I mean, this whole thing kind of came just, I got an email from Noah just asking people to apply for this position, and I was on the DEI committee for a little bit, and I had quite a, I had a lot of fun with that, and I was able to learn a lot, too. And I was just, oh, this looks like a great, great position to have and a lot of learning opportunity and relationships to build. So I filled out the form, and then I got called in, and now I'm here. And I'm super excited to work with everyone. I'm super excited to represent the students, and you know, I'm ready to get started. Go Hornets.
Excellent. And welcome, Julian. It was a pleasure interviewing you with Dr. Latch, and thank you to Noah for assisting with those interviews. Really appreciate it. Moving on to our third scheduled report, continue to learn and summer programming. Superintendent Latch.
Okay, thank you very much. So this is a short one. It's kind of our moving into summer, continue to learn update, and then as we look ahead, we're excited about the opportunities. So as everybody knows, our last day of school is coming very soon, Thursday, and so that'll be a half day for our students. And then we move right into summer programming in June, July, and August. Our summer programs are now established. Sign-up continues, which is going well, and we're ready to implement. As we move into summer planning and preparation, there's a lot going on behind the scenes, a lot being led by Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Ellis and Assistant Superintendent Owesley in terms of hiring process, bond work, building preparation, and then professional development being led by our instructional design team and our administrators. And so there is going to be a lot of work happening. Oh, and I don't want to forget building prep from our buildings and grounds. Rex Clary and his team are going to be hard at work. So that's all beginning to take shape. In terms of fall, we're ready to go with five-day week of full in-person instruction when we begin next school year. We're working through a few things as it relates to some of our virtual families. As they closed out the year in all virtual mode, we continue to have discussions about what that will look like to support them and their students as we come back in the fall. And just to note, first day of school, Monday, August 30. In terms of the strategic framework prep, we have our four goal committees that are starting to meet. Goal one, that was the group that I'm heading up, we met last night, making progress with the revisions that started, you know, while we were going through the initial phase of the pandemic. And so the goal is to get to September, do a peer review on all four of the goal areas, and then finalize that update. And the importance of this is that the strategic framework, these four goals, sets the tone and the direction for the district moving forward for our district improvement plan, our overall direction, and how we measure achievement. And so it is really important that we get this update right and get it set to our vision. And so we're working hard on that. In terms of summer programming, to go into a little bit more detail, we have all these different programs that are set up. Communications Director Britnell has done a nice job in helping to organize and get a lot of these programs off the ground. Our Super Summer Scholars program is invitation to make sure that our students that need greater support at the younger levels, especially in literacy and math, have a really good experience. That's called the Super Summer Scholars. Our English Learner Summer Camp is in place. We've been running that for years, and Katie O'Keefe, who's our lead teacher, does a nice job of organizing all of that. Community Ed Summer Camp under Brian Puffer is underway in terms of getting sign up and organized. Then we have Laura Washington and Alex Shuko coordinating two different middle school programs. One's an academic review camp, and one's an academic enrichment. One's an invite to make sure that students One's an invite to make sure that students that were not as engaged or needing additional supports will be able to participate. And another is just for those students who feel like they need additional supports and there's an opportunity for them as well. Then we move into our credit-based summer school where students can actually earn credit for courses if they're wanting to get ahead or maybe they fell behind in an area that they want to reorganize that. Carol Melcher does a nice job of always coordinating a summer program. And then we have some additional options for students as well. And then under Director Garcia and Assistant Director Ellis, we have special education options spanning from young fives to age 26. Three different options that are written into students' IEPs as to the supports they need over the summer. So we're excited for those opportunities for students and feel like we have a really good program in place for that. In terms of professional development, we talk about some of the hard work and the planning that's taking place. And really, it's really based on these, and I've said that there's three meetings in a row, but I feel like this is important. So I want to reiterate this, that it is really geared around four of these compass points. Pedagogy, when we talk about curriculum, instruction, intervention and assessment. Community, and when we say community, establishing the community within our classrooms, our schools. And now we define classrooms as, is not only in the school, but it's out of school as well. And that is where we have a lot of our diversity, equity, inclusion or culturally responsive instruction, wellness, our social emotional wellness in there, and how we're getting the community involved within our classrooms and buildings. Then we talk about technology integration. We've learned a lot from the pandemic. We want to continue to leverage that and use that effectively, even as most of our students are coming back to in-person instruction. And then finally, learning to space, learning spaces. We talk about design. New furniture ordered at the middle school that is finally coming in that was ordered before the pandemic, but now we're ready to move back to make sure that we have those new supports in place and that our overall design is being thought out and that we look beyond the walls. We know that learning spaces are not only in the school, but they're out of the school as well. And we want to continue to work through that as it relates to our professional development model. In terms of the hard work being done by our instructional design team, this is their latest email visual that they sent out to staff. And I wanted to go over it because I think it really speaks to what they're trying to do here. And that is to give a variety of options for professional development based on where our teachers are and what they need. So if you were getting this email, each of those are clickable links where you could say, okay, we want to learn about these podcasts and they could click and go to access a series of those. There's equity check. How can you find ways to incorporate diverse perspectives in your classroom? If you need to learn more than that, there's more from that. You can, you can go to that option. How are we thinking assessment in assessment marketplace? You go down to tools of the trade, how are maximizing techni- technology? You look at supporting students, that's the wellbeing, the social emotional wellness. And then finally, a variety of educational books to read this summer. And so they, they sent that out and will continue to provide those opportunities. They know that teachers need a break and, and our support staff needs a break, but they're already preparing to provide the professional development that our teachers need at various points along the way. And then the, the last slide, we've been talking a lot about this lately in the district. It's really important for self-care to happen for our teaching staff, our support staff, our administrators. We talked about that today, that we do need to get re-energized because working in a school district is stressful. And especially this year, you look at all the hard work that everybody has been doing and really coming together in a really difficult year, difficult circumstances, and have just done such an incredible job that we want to make sure that our staff gets some time off and is able to recharge so we can come back as we're prepping in August, for example, as the admin team, and really hit the ground running. And then I'll also say this, we, we have a number of positions in the district that need to be working constantly in the summer. Rex Clary and the Buildings and Grounds team. So we need Rex to be able to have self-care and also take some time off during the school year. So it just depends what, what your role is in the district. But this is really important and we want to stress that we want all of our staff to take that seriously. Rest and recharge. So that's it for a short update.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate all of those summer options for the kids and totally agree with the staff and a well-deserved rest and recharge for everyone. Thank you. Susan, did you have some comments?
Could you send or have the staff send the professional development to the board as well?
I was going to ask the same because I know who designed that and I know that it is top notch. And I think we could all benefit from, from enjoying some of that too. Bravo, team.
Back in January, the, the technology one, I loved that. I love the choice board concept. It's great. So yeah, so ditto, ditto, ditto.
You were muted, so I'm just going to say Kara Davis, Jen Nelson and Kelly Whitman and their team. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Brad, did you? No? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to our action items on the agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to approve the submitted contract and compensation package for Superintendent Lodge as recommended by the Evaluation and Compensation Committee. So moved.
Is that you can?
Yes. Candace, your first, your first motion. That's very exciting. Jenny, second. Thank you very much. Discussion, I'm going to turn this over to Trystee Gerby.
All right. So in your packets, the proposed contract, we talked previously about, we benchmarked compensation based upon our peer districts. And that was shared with you by Mr. Ellis. And I will tell you that, you know, I believe that this contract does a good job of providing a number of things. Number one, it obviously takes into consideration the, the totality of this position, right? It's a, it's a big job. It's an important job and it recognizes Dr. Latch for his commitment to this district. It recognizes his PhD. It recognizes, you know, the leader that he is and the commitment that we want to make to him so that he can, you know, this district will thrive under him. And in long story short, I think it was a fair collective bargaining process that we went through. And I guess it was vetted by, by legal. So we, we put it through a legal vetting through MASB and that, and that checked out. So I, I believe we're, I believe we're there. Do we have any questions or thoughts?
Yep. Any questions or comments? Susan?
Can you hear me? All right. So I have a question about the education statement, which was 10% of base pay for each year in recognition of a doctoral degree. So I'm just interested in where you all came about with that and not choose to add it to the salary base.
Well, that was just part of the collective bargaining conversations we engaged with the Dr. Latch at the table. And we knew that we had to do something from a, from a compensation standpoint in order to be competitive, in order to be able to, you know, make our, our district beyond level with or on par with our, our peers. And so we thought that that was a way of being fiscally responsible with any future, you know, superintendencies, any future things, and at the same time recognize Dr. Latch for his tremendous education.
Am I instead of percentage pay versus a stipend, like a set amount?
As, as I recall, I believe that was modeled after another school district. Is that correct? Yeah, go ahead.
So right, there's, there's other districts that do the same thing. So we'll look at a contract from Dexter, for example, and, and they'll, they'll say that there's a certain percentage that is supported by a PhD. And in this case, so, so it is technically a set amount. It's 10% of the base salary. So I mean, that could have been written in as the exact number, but in this case, it's a certain percentage of the base. And that's on par with other districts that choose to do an education stipend like that too.
And why couldn't we just add it to the salary? Total?
It ends up as part of his total compensation for the, for the position. So I guess it's to me, it was, it, we wanted to recognize the fact that Dr. Latch has a PhD and it's a, you know, and that he worked hard for that and that was how we wanted, and that's how we collectively decided we wanted it to, to do it.
So that stipend increases every year current?
Theoretically, yes, it would, but I think we would argue that there would be an increase anyway relative if we put it on his salary or if we put it in his PhD stipend, he would still, we would have still written that in along with the, the, what's the name of it that we did do? For the first two years and then the percentage.
Yeah, it's the increasing.
NSI. So it would have been there regardless, is what I'm saying.
Any other questions or, yeah, go ahead.
I think to, to, I, I had a concern at first about the stipend, not, not to, to take away from, from the accomplishment. But I think now in hindsight that it's, it's very helpful in, someday, Dr. Latch, you will retire. And when we look back at your contract, we'll have, well, what was the base? Yes, you received 186 plus whatever over, over the years. But we're, this is, this is the base and anyone coming up needs to consider that. And it's just an opportunity for them to say, well, hey, I'm going to, or maybe I'll finish my doctorate. Perhaps I'll be inspired to, to, to do this. Or it, it also recognizes the level at which we expect our superintendents to, the educational level that we expect our superintendents to have here in, in Celine. So I'm, I'm all in favor of it. I don't have any problem with it. And by keeping it at the base salary, it's, it's a message to future successors. I mean, this is what you have to work with. And, and of course, the base salary will change with every year. What is the percentage increase? Is it, is it based on a COLA or?
10.
No, not, not the educational stipend. Okay. So, oh, am I speaking Canadian?
So we did an NSI increase. And so an NSI increase and we did, and we tied the NSI increase to evaluation. And, and, and again, that was part of a collective bargaining conversation with, with Dr. Latch.
And it's pretty standard too across a lot of districts. Yeah.
That's what we learned through the process, yes.
I'd like to clarify one point though. It's in, it's 10% of the base every year. It's not, it's not 10% of the base this year and then you establish the base and then increase it by 10% the next year, establish base, then increase it again by 10. That's not how it's working. It's just, it's a set total number, just to clarify.
Yep. It's my job to ask questions, so I was curious.
Yeah, Tony, did you have anything? I wondered, I did, when I got this, I did look back at the peer districts that Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Ellis had shared with us. And I did wonder a little bit about the base and the competitiveness of that. I think right now, the entire package is, is competitive. But when I looked at the base salaries of other districts, we're still on the low side, which I know helps us with our, with our budget. But I just wondered, that was, that was a piece of the feedback that we got from Mr. Killips. So I wondered if somebody could maybe speak a little bit to that.
Well, I could speak a little bit. We, when we, when we decided how we wanted to work with increasing of compensation on an annual basis, when the NSI is factored in and we expect that Dr. Latch is going to be an incredibly highly effective superintendent, we actually see that that increase will be, will put him on par with or be working towards being more in line with, with our peer districts. It, it really will level out with, with, with his incredible performance.
Okay. It was just a little, for me anyways, just seeing that number was a little concerning because several of those districts are much smaller than ours. And so I just want to make sure that we're being fair and, and I know that that was a concern, so.
I can, I can clarify one point to Trustee Eastep's point. Not all districts put in that education stipend as part of their base. So, so they're working their base differently.
Yes.
So in theory, you could say the base is the 164 number plus the education stipend. And that establishes a higher, more competitive base. So I think you do got to look at all the, the factors within the contract. And I will say this too, Assistant Superintendent Ellis did a great job of benchmarking and figuring out what is, what does this look like across all these districts and spent a lot of time doing so. So I really appreciated that.
I just wanted to be sure because the feedback we got from Doc, from Mr. Killips was a little, it kind of surprised me a little bit. And so looking at the peer districts, I, I just want to be sure that we're being fair, but I also want to be, make sure that we're being fiscally responsible too. So I appreciate that clarification. Thanks. Yeah, that's great.
We were looking at total compensation package. So when we add all these things up, we're getting into exactly where we want to go. I appreciate what you're saying. We were clearly under and that was mentioned a few times, more than a few times to us, that we are under. This gets us closer to that.
So that brings me back to what I was asking. Why not, or would there be interest in just adding that to the salary versus putting it under the education stipend? It's just.
I, I think our thought there was we want to make it, well, it's all part of his total compensation package. We want to make that clear, that we want to reward the doctoral degree as this. And this is expectation that if you want to get to that, we, you know, we will pay more for that. And so by setting it aside as a separate educational stipend, we are sort of highlighting that, that if you want more pay, this is what we expect and we're willing to pay for it.
That's what I hear and that's what I agree with.
Yeah, I was just going to say, this really sets the precedent, right, for going forward. So when we move forward, we, we expect and hope that Dr. Latch will stay, stay with us for a while. But, but eventually he will retire and, and move on. And so we'll have to think about what, what is the precedent that has been established? So if it's in the base, then we're kind of locked in there, even if the candidate maybe doesn't have the doctoral degree or, or any of that. So it kind of gives us a piece that we can leverage later. So I like that.
I'm also just thinking about long-term. I hope that Dr. Latch is here longer than many of us. And so looking back historically, so looking, yeah, so looking back historically, future boards will be able to see that that's how that number was, was settled on.
All right, great. I just wanted to thank both sides of the table on this for the collaborative and very professional process and diligence and homework. Thank you very much. Moving to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries seven zero. Moving forward, I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to approve the purchase of a security badge access system for Building Security and Automation LLC in the amount of $71,840 as recommended by Troy Wisnick, Director of Technology.
I'll move.
Brad, thank you.
Support.
Okay.
Support. Dennis, thank you. I don't think Troy is here. Would you like to speak to that one?
Yeah, it's pretty brief and it's, and it's somewhat self-explanatory in that it is to upgrade our badge system, needing to provide that level of security and, you know, keep up with more modern technology. And so that's, that's what this is about.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, one of the features that I saw when I was doing a deep dive into it was that you or anyone with the access could change door lock times and openings and so forth remotely, off your cell phone if needed. And in an emergency situation, sometimes that's important. So yeah, I thought it was a, it was a pretty good system. It was well-recommended in, in the industry, in the field.
Great, thank you. Moving to vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our next recommended motion, I'd like to please move to approve the 2021, 2022 MHSAA membership as submitted by Superintendent Lodge. Jenny, thank you.
Second.
Susan, thank you. Steve, would you like to say anything about that? It's pretty, pretty easy.
This one's, this one's pretty brief too, that, you know, Michigan High School Athletic Association has been a good partner for us and many districts. And so we want to continue with that relationship. with that relationship.
Absolutely. Moving to vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries seven zero. I'd like to next entertain a motion, please, and move to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two MASB membership renewal as submitted by Superintendent Lott.
Moved, McVeigh.
Ah, I knew you'd jump on that one. Thank you, Michael. Second.
Support.
Support Candace, thank you. Would you like to say anything about that one?
Same kind of thing. Obviously, we we get a lot as a as a school board with this membership and use them often for advice and professional development, so so I would say that, you know, it's it's money well spent to support all of us on the board and administration, too.
Agreed. Moving to vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our discussion item section of the agenda, first up, finance committee updates from Chair Trustee Valenti.
All right, thank you. The finance committee met just prior to this meeting, this afternoon. We reviewed our year end twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one amended budget as we will approve it in two weeks. We'll have the final one. That is is looking like we will probably be right about break even for the year excluding our one-time COVID revenue dollars. So that's good news, much better than what we've had in many years past, but we seem to be right about at that break even excluding the one-time items that we get from the COVID revenue. With that COVID revenue, we hope to be able to bolster our fund balance to a level that all of our our auditors, the state of Michigan has said for years where they want us to see us at that level, so we hope to be able to sustain that in the years to come, but we're heading into very unusual period in terms of budgeting. Budgeting is always a art, not so much a science, but in that you're dealing with so many variables on a normal basis, but right now, we've got so much so many changes here. Student count changes, much more than we've ever seen in years past, expense changes. So we also looked at our upcoming twenty-twenty-two budget, which will be coming in as well in the next two weeks. We'll be asked to approve that soon. That's going to be a tougher one, but we hope to get it closer to a break even, but we have some work to do there, so we're looking at that. So anything else on the budget information that we looked at? Good news and uncertainty as normal. We are looking at, as we normally do every year, we borrow from the state for cash flow purposes. Last year, we were conservative and we borrowed more than what we needed. The cost of borrowing is so low from the state, but it helps us get through on a cash flow basis, so we're not running out of money in our checking account to effectively pay our bills. So we're we're going to be accessing that again this year. Anything else? We'll have more again in a couple of weeks. We'll have a lot more information.
Any comments or questions for Donna? Yes, a lot more next time. Thank you in advance, Miranda, for all the hard work on that. Moving on to our next discussion, item B, policy committee updates. Secretary Eastep, chair.
Yes, so I'm going to try. Do you want to take this? I'll go into it and then I'll let you explain. So in the packet, there are two attachments, which is Policy five-three-four-zero, student accidents. That's our current policy. And then there's Policy five-three-four-one, emergency medical authorization. That's a policy that we didn't have but came in through the February twenty-twenty-one NEOLA updates. We found Steve talked to the admin and he can tell you more about why we're deciding not to adopt it and we're including language in our student accidents policy instead.
Sounds good. Thank you. So in short, we're strengthening fifty-three-forty student accidents to provide easier access to digital student emergency records. If we were to adopt fifty-three-forty-one, it basically says, more or less, you got to cart around a physical copy of a form, emergency forms everywhere you go, and that doesn't really seem like a good course of action when we can authorize digital access at any time so that if Ms. Sickler is on a field trip with a class of students and a teacher and they need quick access, technically fifty-three-forty-one speaks to, well, where are all the emergency forms? Well, what if you forget one? And so it really strengthens fifty-three-forty and therefore means we don't need to adopt fifty-three-forty-one and that's the gist of it.
Anything else, Susan?
Oh, yes, I have. Is there any? So that's one of them, so if you have questions about that and then I have a general update.
Any any questions on those two policies?
Could you clarify, do we need to make a motion to remove fifty-three-forty-one? I can't recall because if we're excluding it or not.
It's it's a recommended update that we haven't adopted yet, but.
Okay, so we'll just keep fifty-three-forty-one as is and only add fifty-three-forty.
We already have fifty-three-forty.
So the what we're looking at is the revisions in that student accidents policy.
Right.
Because those revisions are so that we don't even need to adopt the five-three-four-one just for consistency and we put that in for reference.
Okay, want to do the general update?
Yes. So so with with that policy, we will unless you all have comments before the next meeting, it can go on the action. Yeah.
Technically, the second reading and then it's confirmed at the next meeting. It was written as the first reading.
Yeah, so our next one will be a second reading with the vote with the for the revisions.
Right, it it's a clean tappy.
If we can gain consensus.
That's right. Yep.
Unless something comes up. So the next update is what we've been working on and I've mentioned at several meetings. We are working on so Celineary Schools is working on the development of a transgender student policies to better support our students. We had a professional development session on Friday, May twenty-eighth for our admin team to learn more about the need for a transgender policy in Celineary Schools. A transgender student policy would strengthen the support that is already in place for transgender students through the state and federal laws. This aligns with our district's focus on creating a more inclusive and equitable environment for our students. So we will be having it continues to be on our policy agenda, so people of who want to have public comment can come at those meetings. There's an opportunity at the beginning and the end and also whenever we bring it to the board table, there will be opportunities for public comment then as well. Our next policy meeting is on Tuesday, June fifteenth at six PM, where we'll continue discussions around a timeline and next steps for a proposed transgender student policy. And again, there's state and federal laws that already support and our amazing district do have supports in systems for students who are transgender, so yeah. What was my other thing? There was one more thing. Oh, and I believe Candace will be joining us on the policy committee, which I'm super excited about.
I'm excited as well. Thank you. All right, great, thanks, Susan. Any comments or questions for Susan on the policy committee? Okay, sounds good. Moving on to item number ten, response to public comment. As always, the board would really like to thank you for your comments. We received quite a few emails at SAS Board, at CelineSchools.org. We appreciate that. Appreciate any communications to our staff on Let's Talk, so please keep that up. That's how we know what's on your minds and we also know that people do consistently post on social media as well. Just a reminder to always try to keep it respectful and remember that there is a person at the other end of emails, Let's Talk, social media, et cetera, and we are all in support of the children of this district. Moving on to administration updates.
Okay, a couple of teacher awards that I wanted to make sure people know about. Gina Penzica from Celine High School has been awarded the Family and Consumer Science Educator of Michigan Rising Star Teacher Award, so congratulations to Gina. And then to follow that up, Natalie Freeburn has been awarded the twenty-twenty-twenty-one Family and Consumer Science Educator of Michigan Teacher of the Year Award. So really a strength in in that department up at the high school, so congratulations to both of them. And then my my final comment is just putting together what a great senior class we had and I wanted to read read some things and and actually, this is something that I posted to a community letter last Friday, but I wanted to add on to the importance of it. So in our senior class, fifty-two students received local scholarships and awards totaling over three hundred and six thousand dollars. These scholarships come from service organizations, memorial funds, businesses, individual donations and educational institutions. That's followed by eleven National Merit finalists, nine National Merit commended students, one hundred and eighty-nine students are graduating with a grade point average of three point six 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 seven or higher. Eighty-one percent of these graduates will attend four-year universities and colleges, eleven percent will attend two-year educational programs, others will attend skilled trade schools, enter the workforce or join the military and a special thank you to our Celine students who will be serving our country. So I look at that from the standpoint of that's excellent, our senior class. How does that all happen? And as we're as I reflect on this really challenging year, I just want to thank our entire community, students, parents, teachers, administrators, support staff, the Board of Education and endless other groups of people to support the journey. I've said this before and I'm continuing to say this over and over again, this senior class is a product of the hard work and determination of so many people, starting with our early childhood programming all the way up to our high school and alternative high school. And it just speaks to the collaboration of the community to work together, to create the conditions to set our students up for success and I'm very proud of the way we do that here in Celine. Thanks.
Very, very well said. Very well said. Thank you so much. Would any of the Board of Education like to make an update? Michael?
Sure. Last night, I was honored to cast our vote for Teresa Saunders, Dr. Teresa Saunders, for a six-year position on a five-person board of the WISD, the Washtenaw Intermediate School District. So she was the only candidate, so yay, well done.
So I'm sure Susan and Secretary Eastep will speak to this, but we did, it was very exciting to have our first DEI Advisory Council meeting last night. I had three meetings scheduled, all for the same time, so Susan Susan held down held held our board presence at that meeting for us and I'm looking forward to having Candace join us soon, too. So that was very exciting. Also very exciting, I know that sometimes maybe maybe I make some things maybe too personal, but looking at the new hires, I know that Superintendent Assistant Superintendent Ellis is is busy at work hiring new staff to fill the vacancies that we're finding with with our amazing retirees and proud teacher moment, one of my former students was hired. I'm so excited. So congratulations to all of the new hires and I just wanted to echo, I know we had our recognition of our retirees who were here. I know that there are a number who couldn't be with us tonight. My children have been personally impacted by by so many of them, probably, I should say each and every one of them, some in particular more because of their course assignments as they as they went through school. I was looking at Lynn Nichols and reminding was reminded of the the STAR program and the connections that she that Ally made with her there and how that influenced many of her friendships and 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 I think of a special friendship in particular of two that graduated this year. And then I also think about Jenny Turner, who really took my son Drew under her wing when they were just starting the student council program at Heritage and he was just elected again, his class president again for the sophomore class, so she really started that and really, really poured into him and developed his leadership. So I know I'm I'm probably missing someone. I'm wondering if maybe we can get, I know we see them as they come in, but it's kind of a rolling process when we see their names coming in. So if the slides that were shared earlier with each of the retirees and a little bit about them could be shared maybe publicly, I don't know if that's possible, Anna, if we can share that. I just want our our teachers and our staff that are retiring to know how much we appreciate them and I want them to continue to be celebrated beyond this meeting because they couldn't all be here and our crowd is small tonight. So if that would be possible, I would love to see that happen so that we can make sure that they get the recognition and appreciation that they so deserve after a dedication to our our community and our kids.
All right, I'm gonna so we are to the week of the year that all all teachers and students look forward to the most, right? The last one. You know, and I just want to take a second. I I say this often, but I think in the last week of the school year and at the end of this particular school year in general, I I want the staff of our schools to know how appreciated they are and that they are extraordinary and that they saw us through a really difficult time. And I know that my children have flourished and done well under their stewardship and care and I I am and I I continue to be appreciative. I I echo what Dr. Lott talked about self-care and about just getting that rest time, getting that, you know, that recharge the battery and I know that so many of them are are engaged and gonna, you know, engage with, you know, professional development because they're incredible educators, but long story short, like I want you to hear me say thank you very much. And also, like, I'd like to send a shout out, too, to our retirees as well, like you give years and years of dedicated service to to our children and that is appreciated by by me and by us and so thank you for for everything. I appreciate it.
I I did forget to mention something earlier and that is that we lost a special former teacher in Natalie Cameron. She lost her battle with cancer at a very young age. Natalie was a former Celine teacher and then most recently taught in the Ann Arbor Public Schools and, you know, we're talking a lot tonight about, you know, our teachers moving forward and we're excited for them and but we also want to remember some of those that that have lost their battle and remember how important they were to the school district and really impressed with, you know, the Heritage staff, for example, is already reaching out to support her husband Knox and young son Drew and that just it's important that we remember to take care and support those that are no longer with us and I meant to say that earlier.
Oh, okay. So Jenny had spoken about the DEI Advisory Committee with our first meeting and I thought it went really well. We have people who served on the very first iteration in two thousand nineteen and then our Leadership Coalition and have some added some new voices and so I'm super excited about that and it seemed to be a really great meeting. And then also, I want to thank the City of Celine and their DEI Task Force. They held an event in honor of LGBTQ Pride Month in June and did a flag raising and in the flag raising the rainbow flag, many of our students, LGBTQ students and students who are part of the GSA at the middle school and uproar were able to help raise raise that flag and really centering them, you know, while we stood up there for the event and so I really appreciated that. And so I really appreciated that. And then, yeah, thank you for all of our teachers and admin and staff for this year, and supporting all of our students, including our virtual and hybrid, and, I mean, I don't know, I was doing, my son was doing the virtual and hybrid at some point, and just the, you know, partnering amongst the educators, bringing high-quality programming. I mean, you know, it was just like super exciting and engaging from each teacher across, you know, fifth grade. And so thank you all for getting creative and continuing supporting all of our students, whether virtual or not.
Thank you, everybody. Just a really quick thank you to this team, Central Administration and Trustees, for quickly mobilizing to onboard Candace last night. Onboarding trustees is an incredibly important topic to me, and building that strong foundation and beginning that trust, I think, is important, and we welcome you. I want to say just a couple of words about graduation. It was an incredible day, so thank you to the staff that pulled that off. That was a lot of work, and I continue to be impressed every year by the celebration that is put on for our students. And I'd like to encourage everyone sitting at this table to remember our why, and it's them. And just really, really impressed with our graduating class, and look forward to seeing what they do in the coming years. Moving on to our Consent Agenda, the following are offered as part of the Consent Agenda. Oh, no, oh my gosh, I forgot you on your last day. Okay, we're going to table this Consent Agenda. No, go ahead. I'm sorry. I usually let you go first, or that I save the best for last? Can we say that instead? Okay.
So I'll start with my usual order. Many impressive finishes from our sports teams. Track One Regionals, and then last weekend, they had a few placing relays, second in the 4x100, fourth in the 4x800, seventh in shot put, and the girls had fifth in the 4x800. The guys are sending a few relays to Nationals in Oregon in a few weeks, so congrats to them. Lacrosse, our regional champions. Softball, won districts. And water polo placed sixth in the state. Boys golf is runner-up at Regionals and will be participating in states this weekend. In terms of students, the Scholarship Recognition Night went well with senior awards. Congrats to all the students who received those. Final concerts in orchestra, choir, and band went well. Clubs are winding down. The Lit Mag released their magazine appropriately titled Distance. The Jazz Band received the highest rating in festival. They haven't gone in a few years, so they were excited to receive that, with Christian Manahar named an outstanding performer from the State Jazz Festival. Thank you to everyone involved in planning our graduation, the senior class. It was a great and very special day. Amazing job to all the students who finished this year. It was a hectic year, but we got through it. And a huge thank you to teachers, administration, support staff, and all others who have helped make school one actually happen this year, two, a safe and engaging place for students, whether it was through Zoom or in person, your efforts did not go unappreciated. I wish everyone in the community a safe, happy, and healthy summer. And for the last time, that is my update. Thank you.
No, we save the best for last. That was totally on purpose. Thank you so much. Now, moving on to the Consent Agenda, the following are offered as part of the Consent Agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to authorize the following items as part of the Consent Agenda. Item A, Approval of the Board of Education Study Session Minutes of May 25th, 2021. B, Approval of the Board of Education Special Meeting Minutes of May 24th, 2021. C, Approval of the Board of Education Truth and Taxation Hearing Minutes of May 25th, 2021. D, Approval of Payment of the General Fund Accounts Payable of June 8th, 2021, in the amount of $2,123,102.74. E, Approval of Payment of Bond Series Three Accounts Payable of June 8th, 2021, in the amount of $4,533. F, Receive and File Curriculum, Finance, and Human Resources Reports. And G, Reaffirm our commitment to our Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan, as approved on September 22nd, 2020, and amended on January 21st, 2021. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Brad. Support by Jenny, thank you. Moving to vote, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Aye? All those opposed, say nay? Motion carries seven zero. In closing, items scheduled on our next agenda.
Right, so we have Equity Engagement Sessions recap that Instructional Designer Kara Davis and myself will provide. There will be a Music Department Year in Review. Matt Brier will be here to help us learn about that. And then Policy Committee Updates. Those are the three areas that are scheduled right now.
And Budget. Yeah, the six o'clock budget. And Betty, thank you for posting the special notice, appreciate that. Got it. 6:00 PM Budget, 6:30 Board of Education. This is our next opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes, or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Do I have any students for public comment? Seeing no forms, moving on to any other public stakeholders for public comment? Seeing no forms. Our next meeting, the next Board of Education meeting will be held on June 22nd, 2021, at 6:30 PM. That comes after our Budget Meeting at 6:00 PM. I would like to thank everyone for this school year and diligence and hard work, parents, students, staff, everyone, and move to adjourn the meeting of the Board of Education Study Session of June 8th, 2021, at 7:44 PM. I was looking for a first. Okay. Sorry, Jenny, in support?
Yes, support.
Susan, thank you. We are adjourned. Oh, we didn't vote. This roll call vote, this roll call, all those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. It's going to be a challenge.